Okay, so we called the meeting to order and we're all here. Luis is going to be arriving shortly. And thank you all for being here.
So, uh, thank you for allowing us to join you. Good morning, Greg Taylor. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Eddie and I need to to be gone by nine thirty. We both have appointments in, um, back in Maricopa County at eleven thirty and I'm sure Jeff has a couple of things he probably needs to do today as.
Yeah, sure.
Since he's got a suit on, nobody else does.
I like that one.
But but Wade looks better than he usually does.
You're in good.
We're in good shape. I I think the goal of this morning and the reason that Teresa and I had had talked with Eddie and Andrea about pulling the group together is to to give you a sense, Jeff, of of how your board operates as a group. I know you've probably had individual conversations with them. There there's a lot of history in the room. Uh, there's a lot of knowledge in the room. And you'll find that the board is a focused, I won't say solely, but primarily on uh, on the student success of the students of Pima College. I'm I'm probably gonna end up telling you a few things you already know uh, in this brief, and it will be brief, kind of opening. But there is, there is a lot of work that has been done over the last seventeen months since January of twenty twenty-three, when this board came together as a group. A lot of hard work uh, to create a respectful and dignified relationship. And trust me, they don't always agree. It's fun to watch them not. But uh, they do it in a way that is done to make decisions that are best for Pima while still asking the difficult questions. And and doing it in a way that helps them grow as a board, which they have done tremendously. Pretty much on their own, the last year and a half. Eddie and I have been around a little bit. Uh, we've done some retreats with the board. Uh, we've done a couple of retreats with the entire leadership team, all, I don't know, forty or so of them. Uh, the two of us have done that. And that has helped to create a better internal dialogue between not only the board and the leadership, but also leadership in and of itself, when Dolores was uh, was leading that organization. So we think, and and we'll speak for each other as we go because we've done this enough, so we kind of know, but but we think that uh, you're coming into a good spot, to be honest. And we had, we had some of those conversations when you and I talked, so. So with that, let me turn it over to Eddie to make a few comments, and then we'll just kind of open it up for dialogue. The two things I would say to you, there are no, no questions that you can't and shouldn't ask. And but we won't always answer, so.
We won't always find the answer.
Because we won't always have.
Figure it out. Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Or we'll just refuse. He'll end up saying it depends. Um, I would only, I, I'm very pleased to meet you. I'm very pleased to meet you all, or meet you as well, but I'm pleased to be here with you all. Um, I would only add that like, this is truly the beginning of a new era for Pima. Is it's a different way of thinking. It's a different set of people with a different vision. And it couldn't please me more to see Pima thriving. So uh, I'm just very honored and happy to be a part of this, whatever small, whatever small way I can be. And to the extent I can be helpful to you in terms of anything, I don't know exactly what that would be that the people around you can't also provide. But maybe if it's just a perspective from, from the, you know, the perch of Maricopa, I'd be happy to provide that for you. So, anything I can ever do.
Does Jeff and Nicole know your, what you do in Maricopa?
No, I actually, I started down the path of where, how I got there and then. So, I uh, I'm the strategic advisor, the chancellor for the Maricopa Community College. Been doing that almost three years now.
Wait, do you hear this definition?
I I just say consigliere. It kind of, it kind of covers the bases. Uh, I've been in and out of the administration. I started in the faculty, uh, Phoenix College Philosophy and Political Science. And I have a law degree and I kind of bring that into the mix as well. I came up through faculty leadership. I served under uh, two prior chancellors to this current one uh, as sort of a special assistant to Rufus Glasper. I was the uh, associate vice chancellor for public affairs, so the government relations, communications, whatnot. Under both Rufus and Maria Harper Marinick. And then I returned to the faculty for a little while and I came back again. I was in the provost's office for a little bit as an associate vice chancellor for faculty affairs, so sort of the HR side. And uh, I've been about twenty-two years about in the Maricopa system. So that's sort of my, my background, my, I have a labor employment lawyer, but part of the reason that I'm involved in this work is I have a particular you know, area of focus, I guess, around shared governance. So I've done a lot of work in conflict resolution and building like group decision-making systems. Uh, some of that through Cornell University, through the School of Industrial Labor Relations. So I do interest-based negotiation type work. If you're familiar with that. Facilitate bargaining, I do the whole, whole nine yards.
So Eddie and I got to know each other is when I did some work at Maricopa with their strategic planning process. And he and I and one other individual. Long story, but created the process by which the board and the leadership team, and again, another forty-five or forty-eight people worked together to, in about three months, completely rewrite the plan that had been drafted, because it wasn't drafted in a in a good way. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, so we got to know each other really well. It just started when, when Pima reached out. Maria and I go back a long way. I'll let her tell you next. It always makes her and me smile when I mention. We ended up getting together with Teresa and Maria for a conversation about how we could help uh, back a little over a year ago. And it was just because of the relationship he and I have created and the, the work that, that we do that complements each other, so. And then we've been working now with Pima for the last year or so on, on a variety of different things that come up.
So one of, one of my goals for, you know, asking that we all meet was that I wanted to sort of set the tone for our future and make sure that we're looking forward in a positive direction. There are things that frustrate all of us on the board about what's happened in the past. And I, I want, I want to take care of those situations if, if they're still impacting us in a, in a negative sense. But I want us to set goals for the board and for yourself. Um, so we're moving forward in a positive direction. And of course, you know our priorities. It's our reaffirmation of accreditation. That's number one. Um, number two, enrollment is very important to all of us. Um, if, if, if we could increase enrollment, obviously it benefits students in the, in the, you know, nth degree. And it also helps the college because we can have more classes, we can offer more things, we have more enrollment tuition, dollars, all of that. And then um, the board just wants to make sure, you know, we're here to support you and we really want to work well together. We want to be transparent. We, we hope that, you know, you and uh, how your leadership style leads not only the board and the, and the chancellor of relationship with the college as a whole forward in a really positive, thoughtful, forward-moving direction.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Me?
Yeah.
I think if, if uh, I could walk away today with one thing and would be, how do you want us to communicate with you? All, all of us have certain questions and concerns about everything from minutia, individual personnel issues to the biggest picture we have, which I think most of us would agree is budget that controls everything. And um, how do we go about making sure that you know how we feel about it? And giving you the opportunity to tell us, well, you're dealing with it, you'll handle it. Something we need to put on the agenda, you know, how, how do we go about coming to some kind of uh, realization as the process we're going to use to tackle those concerns? And uh, I think it would do a number of things. One is it would keep us from blindsiding you on a board meeting night on an agenda item. And the other would be allowing us to protect your back as much as we want to in regards to you moving forward with initiatives. Uh, I'm a firm believer, if we know what you're doing, then we have a better opportunity to take care of the naysayers or the questions in the community about, well, why is he doing this? I mean, is that something you know about? And it would be better for me to say, yeah, we know about that and we've had that conversation and we're supportive of the effort that's being done. And the more difficulty issues become, the more you're gonna need or want our support on, in your back. And um, so I'd just like to know how we're gonna go about doing that, so that we're all on the same page, a group of six. And uh, that would be helpful to me. And I think everybody would feel like we're moving forward together. And then it also, when new people come on in January, there'd be a roadmap on how we do business.
Sure.
With the chancellor and uh, we'll keep them more in line with that communication effort as opposed to them going off and doing whatever they think they need to do in order to get their voice heard. And so I, I'm a firm believer that one of the, one of the ways that people evaluate the college is how the board and the super chancellor interact at a board meeting. And um, if we're seen as a congruent group, then I think we'll have more support for effective changes that need to be made.
Maria?
Well, can I just respond to him?
Okay, go ahead.
Is it all right? So uh, you, you'll find that I do this a lot. So the only caveat that I would suggest to wait and throw on the table for consideration is that board be careful about, uh, you've heard me say this a hundred times, but getting in the middle of operations that you stay at the strategic level, and that doesn't mean you, you shouldn't and couldn't and should ask questions about personnel or about how something is going. But my advice to you, and I'm saying this in front of them, and it won't come as a surprise to any of them, is that at some point you may say, you know, I got that, happy to tell you what we're doing and, and why we're doing it this way. But that's why you hired me. And uh, it's, it's sometimes hard for a new chancellor, whether you've had experience or not, or a new president, to say that to a board. But I find if you start that way, then it keeps them out of the minutia and working on the stuff that's really important for them, the, the strategy, the budget, the, the things that are that are at that higher level, that thousand-foot level versus down in the weeds. Now, everybody gets in the weeds at some point.
Right.
Because that's, and you've seen it, I'm sure, just the nature of, of the business, so.
Right.
Thank you for letting me.
Oh, you're fine. Okay, so first of all, um, you know, I, I want to welcome you. I um, I'm really looking forward for the new beginning that we have now, that we begin an opportunity to have. Um, I've been aboard, I, I told you, going on my sixth year. Okay, I, Eddie will tell you that we've, I've already been through the hard part. And the only thing I can see is that we're gonna get better. Okay, so uh, with that being said, what I'm expecting was transparency, honesty, and that you keep us informed of what's going on. I happen to be one of the ones that gets into the minutia. Okay, that's just the way I am. Okay, and the reasons.
That's why she's sitting next to me.
Yeah, and the reason is because I didn't feel that my questions were being answered. And, and uh, as I told you before, you know, I was a manager at a, a defense contractor. And a lot of responsibility. And so I poke into all those other areas because of that, because I know that as a whole, we're responsible to the taxpayer, we're responsible to the, um, to the students and the faculty. But the number one is the students. How are we gonna support them? You know, um, I, if I have an issue, I will talk to you first. I promise you that, that I will talk to you first about an issue before I bring it out to the entire board, because I'd rather resolve it individually than bringing it out to the group. If I think it had, it has to do something with how the college is being led or or what we're agreeing on or not agreeing on, then we're gonna discuss it as a group. Okay, um. I don't know anything else. Um, I've known Eddie for a long time. He's been very, very helpful to me. Dave Baroski too. The history that we go back is that we basically kicked him out in our first meeting. Poor Eddie, he couldn't run out of the roof asking.
Took a year to get back in the room, by the way.
No, so uh, I, I come, I, I come across as being a really strong person, um, very determined. But the reason I'm on this board is because I want what is in the best interest of the students and my community. That is the one and sole reason that I'm here. So, that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, and I concur with, with what was said, especially around communication. I honestly don't have anything really new to add. I mean, other than, you know, Jeff, you and I have had a couple of conversations. I know we have more, more conversations to come, so I've appreciated the time you've given me and the listening to, to the, the priorities as, as I was articulating them. I mean, mostly I just, I, I I'm curious to hear from you, similar to what Wade was saying, like, how do we, or how do I best support you? Because I know you've got a lot to learn and, and then ultimately have a lot of decisions to make down the line, so I want to make sure you have enough time to, to, you know, really understand what's going on in the college and understand what's going on in the community and the state, so that you can make informed decisions. So if, um, I or we can, can help you on that, on that journey, I certainly want to be a, a positive influence on that. The only other thing I'll add, and I think I, I mentioned this to you individually, but I just think it's worth saying to the group is, you know, um, the college has done a lot over the last few years or the last many years. I mean, coming from a, a fairly negative place with the, with the HLC and everything else to, to where we are now, and a lot of good has been done. But I do think there's still a good amount of pain and hurt and mistrust internally with the college. And so I know that the the chancellor's role uh, is and probably should be primarily forward-looking and outwardly looking and um, but I would encourage you, um, which I'm sure you're doing anyway, but I would encourage you, especially during this initial period, to spend uh, a more significant amount of your time internally. And we want you to get to know the community stakeholders and all of that stuff, but I think we as a board can kind of hold some of those folks at bay for a little while, um, and let you really get to know, um, your, your teams uh, from, from top to bottom that are, that are doing the work to help the students that, that we want to get through this process, and so you can really understand all those operational details, and then they can begin to trust you in, in your leadership, and, and hopefully you can help them heal from some of that pain that has existed, and then we can move forward positively and constructively. So whatever I can do, and certainly I hope whatever we can do as a board to, um, give you that period where, um, you can spend that earnest time, you know, really getting engaged with the college internally before you have to deal with everybody's opinions externally about what the college should or shouldn't be doing. Um, I hope we can, we can get to that place and give you that kind of grace period where you can really feel comfortable before, um, before you have to deal with all of the incoming externally.
Thank you, Greg. Um, just, I would like to add one more thing to that. Um, when Dr. Nasty and I met last week, um, I mentioned to him that, you know, the first six months of his uh tenure here, um, matters significantly. But in this situation, our number one priority is our reaffirmation of accreditation. And so even though he may have, you know, lofty goals and plans to move the college forward, we may not see those come into action this first six months, because we have a priority even greater than that. So behind the scenes, Dr. Nasty is going to be planning and talking to people. I shouldn't say this. I shouldn't put words in your mouth, but um, that's, that's my, uh, hope that he, he is moving forward in a great direction, like you're talking. But our, our, our number one priority is HLC. And then for, hopefully you're here for the next ten years. So for the next nine and a half years, um, he'll be able to work his magic.
Right. But first of all, uh, let me just say, thank you. I, I'm, you know, really, this whole week I've been filled with, uh, with gratitude and I really appreciate the welcome that I've received, uh, from the board especially, and uh, the employees, members of the community. It's just been great, you know, and it's been a wonderful experience. And I'm you know, just really, uh, thrilled to be here and to have this opportunity. And Pima is a great college and it, and it's the reason that I, of course, applied and, and I am ecstatic uh, with everything. It's been, it's been great. And let me just go through all things. First of all, in terms of communication, right? You know, my first one hundred days, I've kind of built the theme around listening, learning, and leading. And I think in order to be effective, uh, as a decision maker, I, as Greg mentioned, huge learning curve for me, new state, new city, uh, new organization, new board. So there's a, there's a lot for me to learn.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, and so that is kind of the, the, the focus for me, and, and and I've got a draft, you know, kind of first one-hundred-day plan that's kind of centers HLC at that. But just in terms of the basics, to start with, communication with the board. I've had individual meetings here my first week with the board, and I would want to that to continue, you know, I would want, I don't know if that's a structured thing, where we'd say, okay, we're having individual meetings, but of course, I, I really want to encourage phone calls and and texts and, and informal communication throughout. I, I think that's gonna be, uh, central. And I understand that getting in the weeds, uh, comment, I, I totally get that, and, and I'll find where that line is, but that also helps me learn, right? That helps me kind of see.
It shifts.
Yeah, right, where, where, where things are, are going. So I am gonna do, I'm gonna be very intentional, I think, uh, in engaging the board regularly throughout, you know? Whether it's at least once a week in, in, uh, in terms of phone calls, perhaps more, uh, as well as kind of structured conversations and meetings. I'm very much, you know, I know we're in a, as Greg's here on Zoom, we're in a very much a virtual world, and I get it, and that's super convenient, sometimes more efficient, but I'm very much a face-to-face, kind of in-person leader, right? I want, and I've told the, the team that, you know, I really want to meet people in person. I want for us to be present at works. To me, there's something in real-life communication that, that matters, right? We're in education. It's a human endeavor, and I, and I believe it in that strongly. In terms of prioritization, yeah, number one is for me, it's listening, learning, but also part of that is leading. Are there things in the immediate that we can do? I liked what, uh, Board Member Taylor said about the balance between external and internal. Certainly, we are a community college. I really believe Pima is a community asset, you know, and that's a huge responsibility. Uh, and we want to cultivate that asset. But I think we have, sometimes we I think we make a mistake to say there's, it's a two separate things. There's an external responsiveness for the college, and then there's internal. I think you have to have your house in order in order to best serve the external reach. So you, you have to have that, those things kind of work together. We can't serve the needs of the community if we're not operating efficiently and, and at our best internally. So I think those things have to be aligned. And they're, they're related, right? The community needs, we adjust internally, we think those operations right, and, and we, we kind of work on those things together. But I don't, I don't, I want to be careful, of course, you know, yes, we want to be responsive to communities, but we have to be doing well internally as, as well. From the board perspective, all I would ask is for some grace and some time, and you've already kind of expressed that. Uh, we know in large organizations, my experience, in, in, in educational institutions, that these are big ships. And particularly for someone who's coming on this, that, in a new city, new town, new state, everything, new organization, turning those ships may, may take some time. Hopefully, there's some easy things. Uh, some, some smaller things that, that we can do to, to begin to, to turn that tide. So communication, want to be really intentional on transparency, communication uh, throughout. I think I've had a career built on integrity and, and communication and honesty. I want that to continue. And sometimes it is disagreement, uh, but I think that's healthy. I think, I think disagreement is good. There's not going to be one perspective. And, and look, very often, these aren't choices between this is the right choice and this is the wrong choice, right? This is a pretty good choice, and this choice is also really good, but there are some considerations, right? There's a lot of gray uh, in, in these decisions. And sometimes, uh, you know, that's gonna take some real discernment.
Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here.
So, thank you for all the feedback. I do have a, just a kind of a draft, first one-hundred-day plan. I'd love your feedback on it. It just kind of lays out uh, what I'm thinking about. I've planned my first day. I met with students. Number one, I wanted to hear from them. Yesterday, I met with faculty leadership. I met with staff. I've met with the board members, and, and that will continue. I really want to plan listening, learning sessions on all of the campuses. Of course, I'm meeting with a variety of community leaders externally as well. And I want to gather that, uh, to help really clarify, if you will, refresh the vision, but my centerpiece in terms of discussion is, no matter what the decision is, it's always, how does this impact our students? What is best for our students? Now, then we get into, well, how? And, and there can be some disagreement on what is, what is best for our students. But that should all, to me, that's always been my guiding principle. I, I am at the heart and educator, right? I, my, my roots are in teaching. Right? And so that's kind of how I see the world. I believe in education. I believe in learning. I love teaching. And regardless of the position administratively that I had and different responsibilities, that's always kind of at my, at my core is because the students, of course, are members of the community, right? And so if our students are successful, whatever that means, and we're placing them in great jobs, that's going to benefit uh, our community. And so that's always kind of my true north, if you will, as we go through those complicated decisions and, and, and those pieces. And that's kind of how I see the world, if you will. Uh, so that will always be at my center point. But please, I I would encourage the board, if they hear something or see something that they think deserves, uh, my attention, never hesitate to shoot me a text, pick up the phone, call me, knock on my door, uh, whatever it is, uh, so we can address those issues. So I'm looking forward to the conversation today.
Great. Are you gonna share this with us?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Teresa, do we want to see if she has anything to say?
No, this board meeting is just for the board and the chancellor to talk, yeah.
No message from Andrea.
But Luis, why, do you want to make any comments, opening comments? Thank you.
Well, you, the only opening comment is I apologize for being a little bit late, but I'm here. This was important. I liked what you said when I came in. And I'm also a as we all, as board members, but also as a community, we all that are advocates for students as well, too. I personally have invested an interest in, uh, with Pima College, but more important, it refers to what you just mentioned. The students are community members, most definitely. And those are community members that also have families. Families. And once those students have always been a advocate, once those students graduate, they demonstrate and model what's next to come in reference to what's one of the president, Pickle Town, Pickle Town, what do you call it? They see what they what I'm trying to say is, once they graduate, it's a norm within the family. Right now, I think we need to really, really, really push. Push more, but also reinforce that as, as a graduation, not only in high school, but at the community college and the university. Being a norm for each other families to swap to. Cause it's far, far fewer and within in-between and I think there's more that we can do and. And we, we, we will with the new leadership that we have. I totally agree.
Thank you. Good to see you. So the, I think the most important thing on this piece of paper is the word draft, the watermark on this. So I'm eager to get uh, the board's uh, feedback, but I was just thinking about kind of the first hundred day. And, and I broke it up into, uh, first of all, theme. And, and you're right, this is, you know, I, I thought long and hard about, and I like what was said earlier, you're coming into a good space. There's a lot of great things happening at the college, great board and, and there's a lot uh, situation. So. For me, it, it's really, I think, any good leader, right, should listen and learn first before, you know, making some decisions. So I wanted that to be the theme. And then I just broke out some priorities in terms of my learning. Uh, what, if you will, the goals would be, and then the outcomes at the end of kind of, if you will, the thirty, sixty and into the hundred days. What I'd like to see. Now, of course, right, there's a million other things. That we'll be addressing throughout this time period and, and I've already started in, in, in some of that. Uh, but these were just kind of some of the priorities. So I'd love to get the board uh, feedback and just kind of walking through it, right? As you can see, HLC and enrollment, I want to learn, those are kind of my learning priorities right off the bat. Uh, and of course, building relationships, right? And that started this week with, of course, the board, the governing board. And all the internal stakeholders, students, uh, and, and that's important. I mentioned to you, we've launched, we're launching this listening and learning series, where I'm gonna be out there uh. Talking to people and, and try to gather information. Uh, we, we have to complete review. I'm gonna, I'm digging into the enormous assurance argument document. But it's been great because it helps me learn about the college too, but I'm trying to notice if there are areas that we need to, to look at those. Uh, and looking at, you know, our key performance metrics, you know. Well, we're doing some great things, but it breaks my heart, you know, to think that, you know, ten students come into our doors. Uh, seeking a degree, you know, a- after, you know, four years, six years, what, two of those ten? May have earned a degree. So that means we've got to, we've got to really look at that and do more. So really looking at those. And then, of course, early on, right, setting up the chancellor's goals for this coming year, I'd like to have that done. Sooner than later, right, as, as we head into Labor Day, certainly before then. And I think HLC enrollment, I've heard a lot early on about communication, communication with the board, communication internally. Maybe there's some goals there um, operationally, but I, I think some, it's a, it's a big fish to fry, right? HLC, number one, we've got to have our accreditation or we can't serve anyone, right? That's n- number one. But hey, enrollment, we need to be thinking about that. The good news is, I think our fall enrollment's looking pretty good from what I see right now. Seems to be up, so that's a positive, but can we do more? As we get into the sixty days, right, continue to learn. I want to learn further about communication, operational effectiveness, right? It's a big institution, where could we get better in alignment? And start to identify emerging themes and certainly want to have that HLC assurance argument out the door in October scheduled, and so that's a clear outcome. And then at the end of the hundred days, as you can see, I would want to publish a first one hundred day report. Of course, working with the board on that, going out to the community internally and say, here's what I've learned, here are some emergent themes. There were, I think we can address and it kind of refreshes. Of course, we have a strategic plan, but kind of refreshes. How we're thinking about priorities, things you want to do, my goals, your expectations as a board for me. And so, open to any feedback, it's just kind of a framework here, but this is, this is what I'm kind of thinking about anyways.
So I like it. Um, one thing that I would like to uh, suggest on the operational effectiveness. Um, you know, I think it's really important when we, when we look at areas for improvement. We look at it from a positive lens. It's an opportunity to improve, to grow, to become better and not as criticism. Um, I know I sent you an email last week about a student complaint and. I, I know the people that were listed in that complaint and I know what was said was done. In order to improve as an institution. The whole institution needs to get that information to lift everybody up, not just the one or two people. That were listed in the document because, you know, sometimes, um, you know. It was just a bad day or it was just, you know, the impression of the person, but I, I really think that. Um, we can all look at things two ways, right? Ooh, criticism, I don't like it, you know, they're complaining about me or, oh wow, this is an area. Or improvement and growth, and I think it's really important to look at it with that positive lens, you know? The college really isn't doing anything wrong or badly, but there are areas that we can improve and everybody should. You know, see that as a, a joyous, happy thing, right? We're gonna get. Better and bigger and smarter and faster, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I, I like the idea of get better, right? Just get better. And, and I, I love the word and, it's like, let's recognize the great work we're doing. And, and there's more that can be done, right? This is really good and. It's not, and, and sometimes people will frame that with but.
Right.
They'll say, well, we're doing this stuff, but you forgot to do this, you know, or this could be better. It, it's, hey, this is happening and it could be further, but a- and, you know. We ask to, and how by mo- model is to be somewhat thick-skinned, right? The stakes are, are serious here for our students, so. Um, we can't be afraid too, to have courageous conversations, right? And, and say, hey, man, you know, we, we've got to. Get better in these spaces. I met with students on the first day, their stories were amazing. Uh, all different types of experiences and uh. And uh, that's really where I get my energy, right? It's inspiring to talk to students and kind of see what they're doing and. What they're going through. And we're changing their lives. And there's other students who, who've not reached and we've not done well, we've got to do better, right? And so I just want everyone to have um, some of the same experiences that, you know. Some of our students are, you know, have experienced. So, yeah, I agree. It, it is how you frame it though, and, and some of that's human nature, right? It's uh, I, I think we all have a little like, oh, you know, you kind of feel that criticism, but that's how you grow. Thank you for saying that, I appreciate it. I'll do my best, yeah.
Texting with Libby about the scholarship money, so.
One, one other thing is the strategic plan. I think I mentioned to you that um, we had uh. The college had worked on extending it for a year. So I think that that is, uh, I like the fact that you're, you know, you're um, looking at the. Internal and external stakeholders, you're uh, integrating feedback into the mission and the vision and that, that. You're, you're thinking about this new plan starting next year.
Yeah, I, I think um, we should extend the street because it ends like now, right?
Two thousand, twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five. But I'm eager to, and I think this is kind of a good springboard into the next, right, the next strategic planning process. So that's exciting.
Wade, you got a whole list there?
I'm a listener man. I don't think I need answers on these, but I'd like to throw them out.
Sure.
I think that with me for one, if you go on any of these listening tours and you feel as though you need board support. You call upon me to go with you if you want. Be happy to go stand in the shadows. To show the community that you have board support. Then as far as um, putting your goal list and your evaluation, we need to, to agree quickly, I think. When, where and how we do that. And maybe after your head clears, that could be a couple of years, but. And as, as far as HLC is concerned. You look at that seventy-seven page document that we got the other day, I don't know what all that stuff means. However, I think that I for one have read between the lines and. And I think a lot of it boils down to two issues. One is the board. That we've had some, some people write letters to HLC about board members attitudes and. And. Things that I think have been pretty much resolved.
Okay.
Uh, and then the other thing I've heard is that specifically. We're, we are gonna get or have been dinged on dual enrollment issues. And for, for me, that's a big deal. Uh, we, we pride ourselves on cooperating with the area high schools on dual enrollment. But uh, for the rest of you, I had a conversation with chancellor about. We have the high schools that we're doing dual enrollment with, some of which are folk ed things. JTED just came out with a new building. That is gonna duplicate services from their high school satellites. And, and put those, those things, was it twenty-five million dollar building down on Parkinaho? And then we are doing the same thing. Uh, on some of our campuses and um. At what point in time do we have a conversation about whose job is that? Does, does it truly need three arms on that animal to get the job done? And. Way back twenty years ago, when JTED was just a conversation with me. It was, well, we still have to provide services to the rural areas because we can't get the students into town where those big programs are. But I think, you know, Tucson is shrinking as far as that is concerned. And uh, chancellor needs to meet with Prather, the JTED CEO to discuss. How do we work together, make sure that we're offering what needs to be offered? And then. The ultimate question that I have in regards to all that is, how many programs do we need to train people for minimum wage jobs? Uh, because we are spending a lot of time and effort in programs, both staffing and building-wise. To train somebody to get a certificate to make twelve bucks an hour. And is that a community college function or is that a JTED function? Is that a high school function? So.
I, what, what, what's the dual enrollment issue for HLC?
Well, it's additional locations.
We have not supervised, as a college, we have not supervised the dual enrollment satellites. As well as HLC thinks we should.
Okay, so it's not a dual enrollment issue, it's a su- it's a management issue. Just happens to be dual enrollment, that is the management problem. Is that what I hear you saying?
It, so it's additional locations, which is anywhere that we teach more than fifty, fifty percent of a program. And the, the, the difficulty with dual enrollment is, um, I think there, there are. You know, it's in the prisons, it's in the high schools, it's in just additional locations and the, the um. You're right, the administrative uh, coordination at those sites. You know, they have to be equivalent to a Pima Community College campus. That means, you know. Preparation, textbooks, libraries, you know, there's all of these requirements and there are a lot of. Boxes to check and I think what Wade is mentioning is that a lot of that alignment with the additional locations. Possibly fell through the cl- cracks.
Anytime any of those institutions wanted to do enrollment program, we just said, okay, and we gave it to them. Without having the infrastructure on managing it.
So. And I, I, I'm into the weeds in this because I know a little bit about dual enrollment. So is it dual enrollment program or dual enrollment classes? Because that, there's a, that's a different. Those are different words and fifty percent of a program in dual enrollment. I would, I would be surprised if you were teaching. Over fifty percent of a program through dual enrollment. You might be teaching all the gen eds, but that's not fifty percent of, of the program. But it might be classes. So some of it might be semantics. I think you need to look at that.
Well, what I'm saying is, we got dinged on it. And uh, we're not gonna solve this problem, I'm telling him.
No, I understand that.
That uh. Back to HLC, I see us having two major issues. We're working real hard as a board. To manage the issues that we got dinged on. And I think the, the biggest one that I've been told uh, from staff is that the dual enrollment issue is a big thing. And I think if we get those two things taken care of, we're, we're off and running. And then the third thing under HLC that I would say is, I just sent a, a text to. The board president and Wendy uh, about, we're gonna have a mock interview. In a couple of weeks. Four weeks, September sixth, seventh, eighth, whatever that is. And uh, I for one, although we've been through training, I'm not ready for that interview. And I could use some more training on what we need to know about how we're gonna answer, what questions might get thrown at us. Uh, so that we can practice more to be prepared for that December interview process. So I'm willing to spend more time getting prepared, because we don't want to blow that as a board. Uh, will we, will we meet with those evaluators from HLC? And you know, my past experience as being one of those evaluators at the high school level is, they, that means a lot. On what the board members say in regards to, do they know what's going on and do they know what's going on to fix any issues it might have? And I, I don't know if I'm comfortable enough answering those questions without some additional help. And that needs to be done right away. If we're gonna do it September seventh or whatever that is.
And, and one thing about that interview with the board is that, you know, we're, we're volunteers. I don't think HLC expects each of us to know everything about the college. But as a board collectively, somebody needs to know. And so that's one of the things that we'll do in this. Future training within the next couple of days is that, well, well, well ascertain which of us. Will be the speaker for, you know, board issues, which of us will be the speaker for. Uh, enrollment and outreach issues for, you know, and then that way, we don't all have to be. Prepared to speak on everything, but one of us will have the knowledge to share with them. Maria, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, the other thing too is like the, on the dual enrollment, from my perspective, what I have seen, it's like, we're just agreeing to. You know, to accept the dual enrollment, like dance classes and ballet classes. And it's, and, and, I mean, should we really be doing that? What is the program itself in dual enrollment? What's the objective? What are, what are we trying to gain? It's not just about giving somebody a class and giving them credit. Because actually, we're robbing ourselves. We, we are by doing that. So I think it needs to really be looked at.
So do we need a practice session before the practice session in terms of the HLC?
Sure.
Okay.
And then a evaluation session.
Before the session.
After, after we screw it up.
Well, but, but in the practice, we're, the screw up in the practice is the idea, right?
But we're gonna learn.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I don't think any of us would disagree that HLC is that big thing, you're in the corner of the room, hanging over our heads that we need to nail. Get this thing over with.
Okay. Teresa, at some point you might want, not, not now, but at some point you might want to. Uh, in, in your next one-on-one, talk about some of the reports that went in, some of the. Things that, that occurred with those reports so that. Uh, so Jeff has that background of why things are where they are at this point. Some of the conversation that you and I had, sorry.
I'm going, I'm gonna say that I'd like to be included in that, only because. The way that some of those reports were written. I have the background on it as to what it really, what was really, what was really meant by it.
Greg, do you have anything you want to add about the hundred day plan?
Yeah, Andrea sent me a picture of it. No, I was uh, I was zooming in on my phone to read it, but I, I, I got. Thank you, Andrea, that was good. Um, you know, as a structure, I think it makes sense. I mean, I, I think the, the substance of what you're gonna see and the substance of what. You're gonna want to do. I, I think it's the, the devil's in the details there, but the, the structure of what you've put together, I think makes total sense to me. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just eager to. To get to the substance part, once you sort of get your, get your hands into everything and, and hear what you think in terms of um. in terms of um, what's going really well. And, and like you said, are there some short-term things? Some low-hanging fruit that we can change, that'll reap some, some um, rewards for our students? And then, you know, ultimately, what are the longer-term sort of built into a strategic plan kind of stuff that, you know, about moving the institution forward?
Great, thanks.
So I, I would offer um, because I know Wade loves these meetings, that uh, if you go down the road sixty or seventy-five days, if, if you think bringing your entire team together with the board is something minus Wade that you would wanna do, cuz, cuz Wade just really doesn't like that. Matter, matter how many jokes I tell, matter how much I pick on him, he just, he's not a big fan, but just kidding. Uh, actually, that's the truth, but just kidding about that. Um, but if, if that's uh, could be a part of your process or you want it to be a part of your process, you just gotta reach out and, and we'll, we'll find the time to, to do that. I think we've got a, got a good relationship with the board, we've got a, got a pretty good relationship with the executive leadership team times and in that kinds of conversations. Uh, and they're, they're a pretty vocal group uh, for the most part. So it's just, if you think that that would fit into what you're building, that's just an offer and there's, there's no charge for that, and you just do it, so, well, there's a charge, but.
Maria, do you have any comments about the hundred day plan? Luis?
Wait, wait, a, a budget? Looking at the budget.
And you know, any way that you can, Wade mentioned the budget too, any way that you can have the board be involved in that so we can be more educated about how and where and why the college spends our money, that would be a great thing too. We, we, the board would benefit from knowing all of that greatly. And we've, we've asked for that over the last two years. Um, and they've been, they've been helpful, but you know, the more we dive in, the more questions we have too.
Sure.
Thank you, Maria. Luis?
I just wanna say, um, I mentioned this before, but I think we need to keep in mind that after November, we might have three new individuals, but more important, right now that we have the five that are here, I think we, if we, it'd be very helpful for all of us um, and our new chancellor here, to really look at the org chart, reference to what we have. Uh, I know has changed uh, in the last two, three years, but let's look at the, the latest one that we have. And again, uh, not only the org chart, but I think it's a very important reference to to, to the review. It refers to what we have here, but also um, one main thing, it, it's good, it'll come out later on. It's the uh, comes back not only to dual enrollment, but to the enrollment as well too. Uh, students, uh, full-time students as well too. Cuz I think it's a, has increased in reference to what we have, but I think we can do better. The other word that I wanted to say, I've been saying for since day one, there's always room for improvement. At all levels. Uh, at the bottom level, at the higher level as well too, but it's always room for improvement. For the betterment of the students as well too.
Eddie, do you have any comments on the hundred day plan?
I, I think it's very impressive, my only comment is a, the technical one. For that last hundred days, the date range, I think you want that to be ten seven and eleven sixteen.
Okay, yes. We're in here to reinstitute the football program. What's in that coffee? Carry it in here.
Oh.
One um, other item, if, if I can, that, you know, what, something Louis said just now, sort of prompted it in my, in my mind, but I think it's worth um, mentioning is, is that I suppose kind of the elephant of the room. And in addition to the H L C uncertainty is the, the election uncertainty, right? About what's gonna happen and, and regardless of what the outcome might be, I think we can be guaranteed that it's gonna get to silly season pretty soon here in terms of the way that, you know, politics uh, happens during election season. And, and I think we'd be naive to think that, you know, Dr. Nasty, your um, hiring as chancellor won't be an election issue that will come up in some way, uh, and hopefully in a positive way. But um, in some way in the, you know, in the course of this uh, this election season with the, the three seats that are on the ballot. Um, and so, you know, I wanna make sure, I mean, going back to what I was saying before about um, you know, making sure that we as a board can kind of provide you with that support and cover that gives you the time you need to execute, you know, the plan that, that you're talking about here and, and how that it does, I suppose, kind of lead right up into, into election season there. Um, so that you're not getting sucked into whatever issue might come up that's being branded about in the, you know, in the election process and can stay focused on, on what you need to do. Um, and I think, you know, we've talked a lot about open and transparent and honest communication. Um, you know, one of the, the conversations I had with uh, Jeff Sylvan, um, and it's, and something for us to consider as a board, and I don't know exactly how we do this. I don't know if it's a, and so maybe we can figure that out, but um, the question I had for Jeff was, a- and his answer was no, was uh, does the executive session privilege for our discussions around the hiring process and all of the deliberations that we had in executive session and the issues that we talked through? Um, is Dr. Nasty inherently included in that privilege because he's now chancellor? And, and Jeff Sylvan said that no, that the board would have to take a special action to extend that privilege so that we could have open and transparent conversations with him about. Um, so he knows coming into it, you know, concerns that we had or things that we, you know, um, thought were going really well so that he, you know, and I, I think as part of that ongoing relationship, the professional relationship that we're gonna have as a board with him, I would like us to consider in whatever the proper format is, the vote or whatever we need to do to um, include him in that executive session privilege so that we can, we can talk about those discussions with him um, in an open way. I think that would be, would be beneficial uh, for him and, and for the college to go forward. So again, I, I can go back to Jeff Sylvan, not Nasty, um, and, and see how we have to do that. But I, I, just to put that out there, that was, um, I, I, I think we should take action on that at some point, and that will be helpful for, for him moving forward.
So Greg, just FYI, that, that was originally one of the thoughts that Teresa and I had about today. And it, it kind of evolved into uh, something different and, and perhaps a bit more positive than that conversation might end up being uh, or, or I'll just leave it at that. Um, and I may also have a little disagreement with Jeff Sylvan on that particular question. Cuz there are nine specific areas that you can go into executive session for. And personnel is one of them. And personnel includes your chancellor. So that, that's just something to consider. I'm, obviously, I'm not an attorney, uh, but I've been doing a lot of stuff around open meeting law and executive session, so.
If I could just interject, I think what Greg is talking about is our prior exec sessions that Dr. Nasty wasn't part of.
Understood.
We can't share that with him unless we do something legal to make it acceptable. Is that what you're saying, Greg?
Correct, that, that was my question to Jeff Sylvan, was whether we're allowed to speak to him about things that happened in exec sessions where he wasn't yet chancellor, and Jeff Sylvan said no, unless we take action to um, I don't even know if it's a vote or what it is that we have to do, but we, he said we have to do something to extend that capsule of privilege to include him so that we can talk to him about what happened in, in some of those previous meetings.
I have a question, okay, so um, so if individually, the board member tell, talks to Dr. Nasty about what we said individually, now what other people said, but we as an individual, I don't see how that could be breaking open meeting law or giving him preview as to what as an individual I discussed.
It, it, it is.
Correct. Please.
But, but it is, because whatever you said in an executive session is protected by, by all of executive session. So you gotta be careful, if you say, if you said in an executive session, the sky is, is orange, and then you tell him that you said that, you're breaking executive session process and law.
Okay.
So you gotta, so you gotta be careful about that.
So, so why don't we just have the chancellor talk to Sylvan, get us an agenda item that allows us to do that, and then we vote on it, and then we go into exec session.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I've just, because I had that conversation with Jeff, I've been very careful in the conversations that Dr. Nasty and I have had, that I'm sticking to things that I know of or have discussed outside of those executive sessions. But like I said, I think that same need for transparent and honest, open communication we've been talking about and wanting from him, I think we need to give it back. And if what Jeff Sylvan has said is true, I think that's gonna get us there is to be able to do that.
Thank you, Greg. Well, any final?
Are you gonna go into executive session and talk about?
Do we wanna go into exec session to talk about your goals? Should we, should we go into exec session? I don't think that we have, we haven't thought about it well enough to want to vote on it in this meeting if we exit exec session. But we could go into exec session to talk about uh, first, you know, first run-through?
Well, I don't have a need to go into exec session.
Okay.
I think this was a good conversation, a good kickoff.
But to talk about his chancellor goals?
Well, we could do that in an open session. You do it now, if you want, we have time, we have time. Anybody has any comments or suggestions or anything?
Do you want, Dr. Nasty, do you wanna get us a list of what you would like for your goals? And then we can look at them and make sure that either they align with what the board wants to do? Or we could add suggestions to add to your list of goals? And then we could work on it somewhere in the near future, maybe at that next exec, that next meeting that we have when we're doing um, H L C prep, it could be a fifteen, twenty-minute portion of that meeting.
We have the August thirtieth board meeting set aside for this.
For this?
Yeah.
For his goals?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was also.
Preliminary stuff before August thirtieth.
Or kitchen by then, too.
Hopefully it'll be finished.
So, so I would remind you all that you talked about three or four things today already.
Right.
He's already written them down. Uh, uh, not that he needs defending, but he's been here three days, four days.
Day four.
He might not know all the goals that need to be done today, tomorrow. I, I give him at least till Saturday.
Well, I, I, I maybe would wanna do it a, a different way. Before we ask him to do that, why don't we tell him what we think? And then let him assimilate it and build that into what he's thinking.
As part of his listening and learning.
Yeah. I think we all are capable of doing that.
Listening and learning.
No, speaking and.
Speaking.
Speaking, speaking. Yeah.
Okay.
And so what, that will happen individually or give me feedback or will that happen during meeting?
August thirtieth.
Okay, August thirtieth, I'll get feedback.
Yeah, you don't have to do much other than listen. And we can play off of, I'll, I'll be your plan here too.
Right, yeah, no, of course.
Yeah, cuz I agree with David that, asking you to put that together now and you haven't even been to all the campuses, she's asking a lot.
You're way.
I may not win the vote. Yeah, uh, a preliminary conversation, we have some time. You know, uh, one of the things that I have uh, not found beneficial to me is the previous chancellor interim, interim chancellor's evaluation, when we have these dashboards with all this data. Um, didn't work for me very well. I mean, I, I tend to be data-driven, but um, evaluating the chancellor on everything that we want done with a dashboard from a certain department, it isn't, doesn't give an opportunity to interact very well along the way. And so I, I for one would like to see it a different way. I don't know what that looks like, I don't have any suggestions, but um, just to throw up on the screen, here's the data, I, I, I think some things we ask you to do could be driven by a data evaluation and other things might be a little more subjective. Uh, I don't, I don't know, I think it would depend on the, the objectives that we have for you, that we agree on.
I have a form. Generic and can be massaged to a particular institution, used it in three different places. Happy to send it to you to, to look at.
I'm gonna guess that the reason that that whole system was put into place like that is because there was a trust between the board and the chancellor.
So this is how the board, I'm trying to understand, receives data, receives or is presented?
Receives updates on your evaluation.
Oh, I see, okay.
So every so often, I don't know how often it was, but every so often, we would get one of the objectives in this dashboard of data. And that's supposed to take care of the evaluation, which didn't really, for me, give me an opportunity to talk to you about it.
So updates on the goals, how they're progressing, okay.
Can I say something? Okay, the, the data that was given to, to, to us or that is given to us is just ongoing objectives. But the actual evaluation for the chancellor was done at a retreat at in the, at the beginning of, of, the beginning of the summer. That was a true evaluation that we used to do. I don't think we did that because Lee was leaving. Okay, but that's, that's the way.
Really haven't done an evaluation.
Right, correct.
So you can have, tell us how you want, how you would see that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. That, I think that'd be a healthy conversation about how we're gonna go about.
And I, I agree too that the evaluation, I mean, we wanna do it collaboratively and verbally, although I will, in defense of dashboards, um, my, I really like dashboard that, uh, you know, I, in terms of, of looking at what, and maybe it's just because in my like professional business life, like I literally live on dashboards, like that's the only way. I can know what's going on at all, is those, is the dashboard that I see day to day to keep up on, you know, how things are moving and whether we're hitting objectives. And so um, I don't know that that, that's helpful, I mean, I think we need to do both, right? I mean, I, I think that, you know, having those ongoing discussions and ability to, to understand and discuss. But for me, to be able to take, use those dashboards that we have now and what Dolores had been providing to give me a quick snapshot of like, are we seventy-five percent there, are we fifty percent there, are we, and is, are there risks? Are there things that are running behind, are there things that are hitting their timelines or their marks? That was super helpful, because I didn't have to keep going back to her all the time. I mean, I could just pull it up and look at it and say, oh, great, and then we move on to whatever else we need to do. So for, for what it's worth, I really liked that.
Uh, I, I'll give you an example, uh, enrollment. We have dashboards on enrollment and our, everybody's hitting their target, but enrollment didn't go up. I mean, am I right?
Yes.
So how do you evaluate that when everything on the dashboard is, every goal was met? But then enrollment didn't go up? Or we were given so much data, we were so confused about the enrollment, we couldn't determine if the enrollment was going up? Because we had all this data coming at us.
Enrollment wasn't considered as a, as a goal originally.
Well, we were given dashboards.
Yeah, we were giving dashboard, but it was not considered.
Well, I think you're talking about prior to me and Wade joining the board. Yeah.
I think you're talking about two different things here. I think you're talking about progress on goals, whether, whatever it is, H L C, enrollment, internal culture, whatever that is. And actually, the evaluation of the chancellor, part of which is this, but part of which is other stuff. Uh, I think those are two different things. The dashboards can tell you where you are on a, at a moment's notice, but not necessarily whether, how you got there is the way you wanted to get there.
Or if we got there.
Or if you got there, so that.
So we didn't have, we got there.
So you got the quantitative data, but you didn't have the qualitative data. You need the qualitative data to decide whether or not the quantitative data is making sense.
So I think we can, we can quantify that by saying, our goal is enrollment goes up five percent. Here's the number. How, how do we determine you're working hard enough to get to that number? And then if you don't get to that number, what we're wrong, and what are you gonna change?
Right.
Uh, but we didn't do that this last year.
You're gonna expect him to be able to answer your left hand, not your right.
Yeah.
Well, I also think that, you know, statistics can say anything the statistician wants them to say by how they're presented and the graph or the chart or the line that one uses. Um, and so from, I, I'm gonna concur with Wade, those, those dashboards are. Um, and so from I I'm gonna concur with Wade, those those dashboards are interesting to me. But I wanna know, you know, the how and the why and the, you know, what's working and what's not working. I wanna know the human component of it. Um, you know, a perfect example was in twenty twenty two, they said that we had a seven percent enrollment increase, three percent enrollment increase. And I looked through all the data and it just wasn't there anywhere. And then it ended up that it was most likely, the only thing I could find was the average number of classes a student was taking. And the prior semester, it had been three point three units. And it went up three percent and now it's three point five units. Well, the difference between average of a three point three unit class. And a three point five is still uh nothing, you know, there's no change. But how they presented that data was like it was an improvement. And from our point of view, wanting enrollment to increase, that wasn't an improvement, right? And so that's that's my concern about the dashboards is, um, you know, we're we're all smart enough. We know, we talk about statistics, all of that, that we know that what what you see isn't necessarily what's happening. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, and in the same, different topic, same uh concern is uh budget. And we we've expressed this for the last two years, year and a half. And I think maybe um, a budget could, a budget goal would be flipping that a little bit. And the goal would be the board understands the budget building process. The board is involved in the conversation about building the budget. The board is involved about uh having a conversation with the chancellor. On salaries and fringe benefits, things like that. Because we get all the data in the world and still don't know what the what the heck's in the budget. Uh, you know, anybody can, any good CFO can put a budget together where none of us understands it. And I don't. And I don't know how we came up with, well, since we've seen as we're talking about this stuff. Uh, I I've had a concern about the shared governance as a result, as it pertains to. Meet and confer conversations or what do we call that? That's shared shared governance conversations too. Is that what we call it? Where where the administration sets the budget amount for salaries and fringe benefits. And the administration meets with staff to set the salary and fringe benefit target. That they get in their salary and fringe benefits without the board being involved in a conversation about. What the salary and fringe benefit should be till the end.
Until the overall.
Till the end when we have to pass an increase in taxes or tuition.
No, no, with we passed Board Policy one point two five and what that entails is that AERC, all employee. Yeah, representative, yeah, council. They um and there's people from faculty staff administration on that and they negotiate, they work together. There's our shared governance part. Where they're all working together.
For their own salary increases.
For everybody's, everybody at college.
Well, they're all in there.
Right.
But so they're sitting down determining what their increase is gonna be.
Well, no, because so like how how that's gonna happen is, um, this past year. We voted, the board voted in June on a a tax increase and a tuition increase. So that we could get, give employees a salary increase. Now, what's happened over the summer and in June and will happen in the future is AERC has that dollar amount. And they're working in that group currently while we're speaking, they're doing that, they're gonna ne- negotiate this new. Um, salary increase. All of them are working on what we voted in June to give them. What's gonna happen is once they make that, and they're gonna come to hopefully a consensus. And then it's just gonna come to the board as thanks, you did what we wanted you to do. We gave you three and a half, four and a half percent pool. I can't remember the exact number pooled increases. So if they come to consensus, it can come to us, they did what we asked them to do, we'll approve it. If they can't come to consensus, they're gonna have options and the options will come to the board and then the board will approve that.
But we already set the tax rate. And we already set the tuition rate.
Right.
So as far as the amounts that would have to come out of the current budget.
Well, we we set the tuition and tax rate for this coming fiscal year. And the monies for those salary increases will come out of that new budget.
So I think what, uh, let me help here a little bit. I think what Wade is saying, and if this isn't very correct, is it's backwards.
It's definitely backwards.
That the board should set the rate in pick a day, February. And say to AR AERC, you have three point eight percent between February and when we approved the the budget in June. You gotta figure out how you wanna divvy that up and bring us a plan and we'll tell you whether we like the plan based on the three point eight. What happens now is, I think, the three point eight goes to AERC first. And they tell you how they wanna spend it. And his point is you're letting the fox into the chicken coop to to tell. So Eddie and I are in in the, we're in the AERC and we get to tell ourselves how much increase we want the board to give us. And he's saying do it back, it's backwards.
Well, that's shared governance when the employees get to.
It's shared governance, but the the board's not involved in it.
We're, we have a fiduciary responsibility to manage the budget. And and one step further of this is if we set the tax rate in February, March, we should be having the budget conversations in the fall.
In December.
In the fall, September. Because like last year, we asked, what what are you gonna do to massage the budget? So we wouldn't have to raise taxes and tuition and we got no response. We we didn't see, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, we didn't see anything in the budget that was cut, modified as a presentation to the board.
No, when we saw in those scenarios that they presented, there was one of those scenarios where we didn't do anything. And it would result in kind of drastic cuts to different things in the college, but we didn't really get that until kind of the eleventh hour. So, you know, if we had gone down that path, it was almost set up as if like, if we make this choice, it's like this horrible situation that the board is setting up. Whereas maybe if we had had that conversation months earlier, we could have finessed what that scenario looked like. And yeah, and I know, you know, I've talked in board meetings before that I felt like the entire process was backwards um from beginning to end. The um, but but if I had to drill down like my, in in the current process, the other part that frustrates me is. And it's it's similar to what we're talking about is we're sort of involved in the very beginning and the very end and nothing in the middle. The uh, and so like like this last year, and this is just off the top of my head, but like I remember when when we had the discussion as a board, I think maybe it was in a. I don't know if it was in a board meeting or in one of the study sessions, but they were asking us like, what do we think? And we were talking about all these things and the idea of differential tuition came up. The uh, that, you know, we should for our higher cost programs, maybe some of the workforce programs, some of the other things we should look at charging a higher rate of tuition. For those programs to help us offset the cost of, you know, the higher higher cost for the faculty and all those other things. And my recollection of that discussion is all of us as a board, we're like, yeah, that's, you know, that's a good idea. Like, we should explore that. And then fast forward to when we got presented the budget options many months later, I asked in that meeting, hey. What happened to that differential tuition discussion that we had? And we was basically told that, oh, well, we talked about it, but we decided that wasn't the way we wanted to go. But like, nobody told us or involved us in that discussion. Um, and at the by, by the time we got those scenarios, it was like, you have to pass a budget this month or everything falls apart. We can't set tuition, we can't open enrollment. And so we got stuck in this, you know, time crunch at the very end. But we never knew what happened in the middle there because we were never involved. We just got the beginning, we got to take, share our thoughts and then we got the end. Um, and so I I think I agree with what Wade said. I think there's probably some things that have to happen, not after we pass the budget, but before we pass the budget. But I also, we need to figure out how to include the board meaningfully in the whole of that discussion and not just in the beginning to get our ideas. And then at the end, where we're in such a time crunch where we can't change anything that happened in the deliberations, otherwise, you know, it screws everything else up for the college.
Right, um, adding to that, one other thing that happened in June, we voted on allowing the CFO. To um alter the budget, it's a common practice, right? To change the budget from the budgeted amounts to the actual amounts we spent there. For we we save on the um. Expenditure limits, all of that sort of thing. But my concern was if if our budgeted amounts were more than the three point four million dollars that we were short to give raises. And we're, you know, we're budgeting it back down to actual amounts. If we didn't spend the three four point four million dollars, I'm wondering why we raised taxes and tuition. And so I'm agreeing with you, Greg, we we need to see that whole process clear through. So we're not told based on the budgeted amount in June that we need to, you know, raise tuition and taxes. But maybe in reality, since we're gonna reallocate the budget to match actual expenses at the end of the fiscal year. Excuse me. So, yeah, I I agree. And that's what we all wanna be more knowledgeable.
Develop.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with with Wade too about, you know, it it is kind of frustrating as a board and it's hard to talk about in the community where. You know, we approve that pool and I and I I don't have, but then we don't really know how that pool is going to be operationalized at the moment. We're approving the budget because that discussion happened separately and after the fact, like Wade is talking about. So it would be good if that happened before we approved the budget so that we knew when we approved the three percent or whatever it was, exactly what we're approving it to do. Rather than just approving this pot of money that then through this process without our knowledge, without us having really any role. Because we can't like do anything after the fact. The uh, so it's, yeah, again, we have a lot of kind of cart before the horse stuff, I think, with the with the budget.
And and so some of that revolves around trust. And and there's been some question about that, uh, as you can clearly hear. Right, as it relates to this whole process.
Or misunderstanding.
Or misunderstanding.
And um.
And both.
And and part of that conversation, I believe, needs to be. I I don't know how you do this, but what has been the effect on increased tuition as it relates to enrollment? So, you know, if we want more students in our program. We raise the tuition so we can recruit them. I mean, I I I don't know how that, what the thinking is there. Uh, but when we get that budget proposal from the CFO, we get, well, you gotta raise the taxes this much and you have to raise the tuition this much. So we'll have this much in order to give salary increases, but never a conversation about what is a three dollar rate impact in tuition? What what's our understanding? And maybe that's part of the speaking tour at some point in time or some kind of a survey with students. What impact did the tuition increase have on on you attending Pima Community College the next semester or the next year? Because we don't, I I've never heard any conversation about the impact of tuition increases on enrollment. And I don't know how you do that, but that's your job.
Or your star department's job.
Give it to somebody.
Yeah.
Yes, getting that, we we don't, that's a good point too, and I I, you know, I I had, gosh, I don't remember where it was. But I, you know, I I was expressing at one point that I was surprised that we never had. We would never, in the time that I've been there, had ever had students using the public comment period at the meeting to, you know, voice their opinion on. Uh, potential tuition increases. I don't know if maybe Luisa Maria before, you know, I was on the board, they ever did. But, you know, we also have a student representative that presents to us at every board meeting. They've never said anything about tuition. Um, and so it would, I would love to hear, I mean, I understand probably conceptually that no one wants it to go up. But like I I, it would be nice to have in some meaningful way, student voice included in those discussions so that we understood. Uh, what their thoughts were, um, cuz I also don't think students are unreasonable and if they know, you know, what that extra dollar in tuition or whatever is being invested in. They might be supportive of the idea of doing it. Um, but I don't know, I'd at least from my my personal opinion, I don't know that I've I've ever heard from students at all. Uh, as part of that process in the, you know, year and the year and a half, year, almost two years I've been on the board.
It would make sense if we were able to tell the students what what the value added was to them. In other words, you're gonna be charged two more dollars a a unit and here's what you're gonna get for it. Happier teachers or, you know, whatever, whatever that that is. Um, but we've never had that conversation either.
And I think that that's something that we need to share with our student representative on the board. You know, this is something the board would like you. And that's another thing that we haven't had a lot of um, practice doing is asking those representatives. Please reach out to your constituency and see groups and ask them these questions. And I guess maybe the board just needs to be better at doing that this next term.
Yeah, we've talked about that in board meetings, right? I mean, I don't know if they were given some instruction at some point in the past where they were just supposed to like. Report on general activities that happened from the constituency group that they represent and not provide opinions on things that the board was doing. But at least I for one, as far as I'm concerned, that's far more valuable to me if they were to offer perspectives and opinions on what the board's doing. From their constituency group perspective than just giving me like a ten minute talk on, you know, that they met and then they did, you know, whatever. Like, I I trust that they're doing that. I I'm more, much more interested in what those groups think about what we're doing, quite frankly.
Yeah.
So I apologize, we've we've gotta hit the road to get to another uh.
We have two more minutes.
I know, but it always takes us two minutes to say goodbye.
Okay, is there anything else that anybody wants to contribute?
Comment on that very last point about the student being recording. That's a phenomenon I see often. And it has to do with a legacy of believing that the board was not supportive of employees. And so they don't wanna poke the bear. And they say, anodyne, anodyne, we went to a meeting, we did this, we did that. So part of the shared governance culture piece is to help them understand you actually do want to know. You know, what they're thinking and why, so that it could be a reasoned kind of exchange. So that's something to work on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I I wanna say, I agree with Eddie that it's probably part of the culture of that the students have. Um, the only, since the time that we've been here, the only complaint they were, talked about tuition was the fact that they were. Looks more expensive than the tuition increase, one dollar or two dollar per credit hour. That's what we were told by Dave. But the representatives from the uh student group never told us anything other than that. You know, and so and uh, you know, like, I have received, you know, I I constantly receive complaints. But people are are afraid to forward them. Just now, I would say that when the last six months. We've been, you know, I've been receiving more complaints than normal on issues that they have. And of course, I forward them. But they were afraid. Their students are basically afraid to say anything. And so that's something that we probably need to work on.
Feel free to continue. We're gonna.
Well, I think we need to wrap this up.
Sure.
Ourselves because there are other things happening today. Okay, so um, we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for being here.
Have a safe trip.
Yes, thank you for having us.
See you around, Eddie. And thank you, guys.
So we, anybody we need to call a worm, you're coming back?